All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting. We're having a special meeting of June 19th, 2017, and we've had a closed session prior to this, and we'll start by, if you could all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Adoption of agenda?
Move adoption?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did we report out from closed session?
Yes, let's have a report out from closed session, please.
Mayor and council, the council had one item on closed session, a liability claim concerning Mr. Jose Ayar, and the council voted unanimously to reject that claim.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda is done, moving on to new business. Item A, the Bayland City Council deliberations process. Staff report, please.
Oh, yes, I'll turn this over to Lloyd Zola. This is going to be the shortest set of slides we've had yet because there's one. And the slide that we have here is a decision tree that we had laid out based on some direction with the subcommittee, and you can look at this in a couple different ways. One, the basic question is, how do you wish to proceed through deliberations to get to an end, which is ultimately a decision on the applicant's proposed general plan amendment and specific plan, and then what is it that you would like to see if it's not that application as far as general plan and policies, and what would you like the outcome of the Baylands to be? Now, there's a lot of different ways of launching into hearings, and in the typical hearing or typical deliberations, you've had a one-night hearing. The issues are fairly direct, they are limited, and you just open discussion and go. My experience with that in terms of general plans, other large and complex projects, is starting with, so what do you think? It's a really difficult place because you, there's no focus to it, and just trying to get a starting point is very difficult. So in looking at, thinking back on councils and other projects, other communities that have gone through the difficult processes well, meaning focused, not necessarily quickly, and others that have really floundered, the biggest thing I found is that the successful ones that felt good with the direction, good with the debate, had a starting point they could work with, and there was an understanding of what is the target at the end and what are the possibilities at the end. So the concept of this decision tree is to lay out the basic question for tonight, which is, how would you like to wish to, how would you like to proceed, which is totally your decision, and then a tree of the basic decisions in front of you. And that second column of the green boxes can be looked at in two different ways. One is, these are possible outcomes, and when you consider approval of the applicant's proposal, that could be an outcome of approval of the applicant's proposal as proposed or with modifications. You have a planning commission recommendation in front of you. One of the outcomes could be approval of that recommendation. You could look at that recommendation and make modifications to it, which is the third outcome. You could look at the entire record, which you'll do with all of these, and decide, let's leave the general plan as it is. You would deny the applicant's proposal and make no changes to the general plan, which is a fourth possible outcome. And the last outcome would be to develop a new plan in lieu of the planning commission's recommendation, in lieu of the applicant's proposal, which is essentially how the planning commission approached their deliberations. Those are possible outcomes. There are also processes that could take you through from the beginning to the end. And the concept and suggestion that staff is making is, think through, what is a comfortable starting point? And recognizing that whatever starting point you have doesn't limit you to any of these options or anything else you happen to think of through the process. So you could start, for example, with, we have the planning commission's recommendation in front of the, in front of your council. What are your feelings about that? Would you like to approve it? Do you want to modify it? Do you want to go some other way? And from that kind of discussion at the beginning, you'll start finding a place to start from. You could start from, we have an applicant's proposal, we have a commission recommendation, what do we want to do with them? And that's another starting point. From that discussion of, what do we want to do with them, you'll start focusing on one of the other of these five concepts. The thing to recognize is, whichever place you start, you can end up anywhere based on where you start. So for example, you could start with, maybe we should look at approving the planning commission's recommendation. Some, one of you or more may want to make modifications to that recommendation, and once you start making modifications, you may make so many modifications that it now looks like something else completely, it looks like the applicant's proposal, which is perfectly fine. So the idea is, choose a starting point. If the starting point, and you find that in an initial discussion, and this happens rarely, but it does happen even on complex projects, in that initial discussion, some councils have said, do we feel comfortable with the planning commission's recommendation, very quickly coalesce around the commission's recommendation, there may be some modifications, and that's fine. They may start with the planning commission's recommendation and then make so many modifications as essentially a new plan. But the idea would be, you have your starting point. If you're considering the applicant's proposal as a starting point, or considering that along with the planning commission's recommendation, question would be, approval as is, modifications, and what are those modifications? It's really the discussion between you as to, if you're looking at modifications, there's not consensus to approve something right off the top. What are the modifications? And city attorney is here, staff is here, I'm here, and we can help you how you fit all those modifications together in a package. If you're starting with the planning commission recommendation, you know, the first question would be, is there a council majority ready to adopt? And if the answer is, no, I'd like to see some modifications first, then you'd go on to the third box, which would be the modifications. Same thing. What are the kinds of things you would want to see modified in that recommendation? And it doesn't matter where they come from. You could take pieces of the applicant's proposal, add them into the planning commission's recommendation, you can take any of the alternatives, you can take things that you've heard during the public hearings, things you've thought of, so any pieces from anywhere are fair game. And then you would look at, if you're looking at modifying the planning commission's recommendation, there's a couple places to do it. Couple issues and questions to ask yourself if you aren't ready to just adopt. One would be, do we consider a different mix of uses? If you're looking at the applicant's proposal, the planning commission's recommendation, one of those questions is, what do we want to do with housing on the Baylands? In the existing general plan, it refers to industrial, and even the commission's recommendation, maintaining industrial along industrial way. Is that a use you want to maintain? The idea of, so mix of uses, what types of uses? The other one would be a distribution of uses. The way the, in the planning commission's recommendation, there is a concept plan map that shows types of uses in different places. You could look at intensity of uses. The planning commission recommendation, 1 to 2 million square feet added to the Baylands, compared to the applicant's proposal, 4,000 dwelling units and about 6 million square feet, or the community prepared plan up around 8 million square feet of non-residential uses. And so, any of those things, you just look at what's comfortable to you and what feels right for the Baylands. And what makes this difficult, what is difficult about this is, one of the things I was taught in planning school, they warned us, before you go into this, realize there are no right answers. It's not a matter of black and white, there is no black and white, it's all gray. And so as you're setting policy for the Baylands, you would be looking at what is comfortable for you, what is comfortable for the community, and it's very much, and if this is what we want to accomplish, there are different ways of doing it, we can help you get there, but very few places, that's right, that's wrong. If you're looking at leaving the general plan as it is, so approving the planning commission's recommendation or modifying it will involve denial of the applicant's proposal. If you decide that you feel comfortable with denying the applicant's proposal but do not want to change the general plan at all, that's the fourth box. You would simply leave the general plan as it is, and the basic process would then, if you leave the general plan as it is, you would come back at some point in the future in the way the general plan is laid out. It's very open-ended right now regarding the Baylands. It does not provide, provide some, but not a lot of direction for future development. And what was laid out, is discussed at the last subcommittee meeting, is a concept of coming back. It was called a plan development, but with essentially a new concept plan for the Baylands. It would lay out, this is what we want to do, that would provide direction to a subsequent specific plan. And so part of the question and differences between the commission's recommendation and leaving the general plan is, do you feel comfortable providing that direction as a result of these hearings, saying essentially to a developer, if you're not going to approve the proposal, bring us back something like this, and we'll be a lot closer to approving, as opposed to, bring us back something, and then we'll talk about what we might think of approving. And the last one is, if you really are not comfortable with any of these starting points and would like to develop essentially a new plan for the Baylands, and this is one of the possible outcomes, even if you start with one of the other boxes, I would suggest following the planning commission's process. And the planning commission's process, the first thing they did in relation to how to develop in their recommendation on the Baylands was, what are the basic principles that would apply on the Baylands, no matter what the outcome is? So what are the rules that no matter what would have to be followed? And as you remember in their recommendation, it's things like, protect Ice House Hill, protect the lagoon, transit orientation, restore the Roundhouse. So the basic things that any plan must incorporate are those basic principles. Then they looked at, what are the land uses and the mix of land uses they wanted to propose or to recommend for the Baylands? And that involved a discussion of the role of commercial, the role of retail, residential potential within the Baylands, the role of also renewable energy generation. So they looked at the question of large solar field versus, you know, solely having roof mounted, and that went through their discussions. They talked about then the intensity of land use, how much development on the site, and they talked about where on the site. And so even though their recommendation, in a clear majority on the commission, recommended the solar farm on the former landfill, there was also a concept of looking at that as a campus, a high-tech campus overlooking the bay, but that was their discussion of distribution of land uses led to wanting all the development clustered in and around the Bay Shore Station and on industrial way and in and around the Roundhouse. So that's just kind of a process also, as you start focusing, and that kind of direction of basic principles, types of land use, land use intensity, distribution, can be used in relation to any of these concepts. I told you it's going to be a short presentation. So with that, if you have any questions, and the other thing you may find tonight is even the discussion of the process and how you want to go through this, will probably, you know, a lot of times will lead you right into the debate on the Baylands, and which direction and what starting point you'd like. Just the discussion of how do we do this will often get you into the middle of the debate really quick. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you. Questions? Madison? Want to start?
I have just a clarifying question. So let's say ultimately the council wanted to push the matter forward to the voters through the election. I'm assuming it's obviously too late for the upcoming elections, would be the next year. So I assume that, like, in that time period, however long it takes us to deliberate to come up with something to put on the ballot, if that's the direction that we choose, then I assume that there, everything's kind of on hold after that until the voters make a decision, right? So we wouldn't really be discussing it further after that point until we have, so there could be a long period of time, months, where maybe the project is at a standstill because we're waiting for the election to come around where we could get that feedback.
Well, I'll, there's a couple ways of going, and I'll describe how one community approached that, and then it's really the city attorneys. One city where I worked on a general plan, there was a growth initiative that said, public services and facilities element, which laid out the relationship between services and facilities and development, had to go to a public vote. In that case, the city council actually adopted the general plan and then put that element out to vote. So there was a gap between their action adopting and the election, and I think there's other options that had had to do that, so.
I think that the, I think in response to Councilmember Davis's question, though, if the council either took an action to approve something subject to voter ratification, then certainly what the council had approved would not go into effect until the voters essentially ratified it. Similarly, if the council did not take an action per se, but simply submitted the matter to the voters for, you know, an up or down kind of thing, then certainly, you know, nothing's going to happen until the voters act. So in either scenario, there wouldn't be any sort of official action taken until after it went to a vote. Now, if you, you know, if the council took an action, as it were, and then submitted an advisory matter to the council, or to the, to the community, then, you know, then there would be a council action, of course, it could be set aside or could be reversed, depending on what the advisory vote would be, but that would be somewhat out of sequence. It would seem more logical to me that if you were going to do an advisory vote, you would probably not take any action at all until you submitted the advisory measures to the voters, to try to take the temperature, as it were, of the community. But in the first two scenarios, if you're going to submit something to the voters for ratification or for an up or down vote, then nothing's going to happen until that vote occurs.
Now, Michael, you had said, I think, in the staff report that we could potentially have something in November?
Well, the answer is yes, if you were to reach some definitive conclusion by, you know, the end of July, first week in August. So it is technically possible that that could occur. Whether it's practically possible is in your, in your hands, but, I mean, you could, it could still happen if you would reach either a decision about something or at least a concept plan to go to the voters by the end of July, first part of August.
Okay. Any other questions, Madison? Clark?
I don't have any. Madam Mayor, as part of the subcommittee making a recommendation on the decision tree, so.
Okay. Excellent. Who wants to go first? Terry?
So it's my understanding on all of this that, you know, first, we would need to consider the applicant's proposed proposal and what the planning commission has recommended, but we have four things really in front of us, and that's the applicant's proposal, a general plan change, certifying or not certifying the EIR, and then approving or not approving a specific plan. So we have four very separate issues to decide, and I think that would that be the correct flow to first look at the applicant's proposal and make a decision on what we want to see there, and then move to the general plan and what changes would need to be made to instigate that? Then look if the EIR adequately addresses it, or would the EIR come after the specific plan?
I think the sequence you're suggesting is perfectly reasonable. I think, you know, the developer's proposal is a general plan amendment and specific plan. So when you're, if you're going to consider approval of the applicant's proposal, you'd have to be, you know, what part of that, is it the entire thing? Are you considering approval of the general plan and specific plan? And there will be a certain decisions that need to be made in terms of SEQA, depending on that. If you end up going away from the applicant's proposal, everything else that you have in front of you from the planning commission is at a general plan level only. There's no specific plan prepared for anything that the planning commission recommended. So, so you would really be at a general plan level if you're getting away from the developer's plan. You can certainly direct that a specific plan be prepared, that's certainly one of your options if you choose.
But if we had gone through, I'm trying to think of the logical steps, and I guess I shouldn't have called it the applicant's proposal, even though that's what's before us, it's more what we want to see there, as Lloyd was saying, what our basics thoughts are, and whether we're looking to get to that point of approving the applicant's proposal or, you know, where our vision is before we went to what we needed to change in the general plan, the EIR, and then a specific plan if we're going with one of the two options of either planning commission or the developer-sponsored plan or our own. I think we need to get that first. I think that's the flow.
As I, I understood your question a little differently than what John answered, and that is, I thought you were suggesting that you needed to start with the applicant's proposal and go from there. I think as Lloyd has laid out, you don't have to start there. You have, you have sort of options under the green boxes to start at any of those places. And inherently in that, at some point, you will come back around to the applicant's proposal because presumably if you choose one of the other four boxes, the applicant's proposal will be denied, but you're not required to start at that top box. It's simply, we had to lay, we had to lay the boxes out in some sort of vertical fashion. But I think as Lloyd has indicated, you have, you can start, you can start there if you wish, the council wishes, but you could also start with the planning commission's recommendation, or you could start with the commission's recommendations with modifications.
Well, we have to consider some sort of proposal first before we can get to the other steps, or our desires, I should say, instead of a proposal. Our desires first, where we want to go with that. Until we know that, we can't look if the EIR is adequate. We can't look at a lot of things and get into specifics until we know if that's where we want to go.
Well, I think there's, I mean, John.
Well, I mean, I think fundamentally, fundamentally, does the council need to have a vision for what you want to do? We say fundamentally, yes. And then that'll be expressed in perhaps general plan, policy, and direction, and that can be further expressed in the adoption of a specific plan. And then if you're going to take an action, whether it be amending the general plan or adopting a specific plan, then you will need a SEQA, an EIR certification to support whatever action the council would take. But, I mean, I think that's, if there's a hierarchy, I guess, yes, you, at a very basic level, you have to articulate what your vision is, and then what are the levers and policies and plans that need, and you would like to see adopted to make that vision a reality.
Okay, thank you.
Cliff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, you know, kind of just touching upon what Terry had said, you know, Clark and I were part of the subcommittee, and so we've been wrestling with these questions and, you know, still wrestling, you know, with them, you know, without having that council input and vision, you know, I'm not sure if we're, you know, in minor modifications or major modifications, or we just do something all brand new. You know, so, you know, one of the things that we did talk about was like, okay, well, could you, and you talked about this tonight, Lloyd, I mean, you could, you could choose, say, modifying the commission's recommendation to the council, and as you're going through all the things that you would consider for different land use mixes and density and stuff like that, that you might find yourself, you're actually more modifying the applicant's specific plan rather than the planning commission's recommendation. You know, I like, one of the things that I like about the, this, you know, about your, your staff report is the process that the planning commission put forth. You know, I think that's, that's really good, and I think that's something that's needed from all of us. Personally, I can't, I can't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with choosing one of these things until we kind of like have our, our discussion. What are the things that we like? What's, you know, what's our, our vision? Some of the things that have been presented to us through written form and presentations and things that we've taken in on our own, things that aren't, that haven't really been studied yet. So, yeah, so just kind of putting that out there. You know, I do have, I do have a couple of questions, though. So Lloyd, if you could just tell, tell us what would be the potential difference between, say, different mixes of land uses and density compared to, you know, changing a new specific plan? So here you have these, these boxes up here, the three middle ones, well, the second, third, and fourth, if we went with the modification of the planning commission's recommendation, and then the bottom box, one of the arrows goes to the new specific plan. So could those be the same, or how would they be different?
Sure, and like I, like I said, you can mix and match these all together, however you want to do it. And the way that you had just described, the planning commission's process, one way of going through it would then be to start with, these are the basic principles that you as a city council want to see regardless of outcomes, same way they did. Then as we get to mix of land uses, which is a general plan policy, we could start, we could, at each of these steps, say, this is what the existing general plan says, this is what the applicant is proposing, this is what the commission is is what the applicant is proposing, this is what the commission is recommending, and then you can make essentially that following the same way. This is the list of land uses that you would want to see. We could do the same in terms of development intensity, we could do the same in terms of location of uses and distribution of uses. So if that were a more comfortable approach, it, it's certainly workable to, to do, do it that way. All of that discussion about vision, policy, direction is at a general plan level. And so the question, once you get that kind of direction at the general plan level, then you're willing to, you know, and you're at a point to say, this is what we want to see, then you have the question that would go to the applicant, which is, are you, Mr. Applicant, willing to modify your specific plan? We're assuming that there's going to be some modifications to this proposal, to modify your specific plan to be consistent with what we want to see and what we've just expressed as the general plan we would like to see? It's going, can say one of two things. Sure, no problem, I'll bring it back. Or you can say, no, I won't do that, in which case, you could go ahead and, and approve your general plan modifications, deny the specific plan as proposed, and then you would have the choice, do we simply wait as a community, does somebody brings us back a specific plan that meets our general plan? Or as John had said earlier, and I think the council discussed very early, actually before public hearings, you could actually direct preparation of a specific plan. You have the authority under state law to, to do that.
All right. Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay. So, I have a couple of questions as well. So, one of the options was consider approval of the applicant's proposal with, as is or with modifications. So if we were to go forward with approving it with modifications, could we then, and my thinking is the modifications would be, you know, reduction in the amount of housing and, and would, if we wanted to, and also some of the aspects of the Planning Commission's recommendation brought into it, so sort of starting with the applicant's proposal, because we already know that's been studied by the EIR, and then injecting into that what the community has, has said is important through the Planning Commission's recommendations. Could we then put to an advisory vote a menu of different levels of housing to be able to say, you know, if you see this number of units, is that acceptable, this number of units, and, you know, go, starting at zero and going all the way up to the 4,400, and just to sort of take the temperature of the community? And then bring that information as an advisory vote back to the council for us to consider, and, and at the same time withhold, and, you know, not certify the EIR until we have a specific plan created, which, which defines more of the aspects of the plan more, you know, more specifically. Is that, is that something that's doable as well? Is that an option? And, so approving with modifications and then putting an, putting it to an advisory vote with different, a menu of options on the level of housing?
I think it somewhat depends on what you mean by approving. I'm, I'm sort of hearing that you're not really approving something, except in, in the most general of senses. So for example, if there was the concept, we're approving, or at least we'd like to, we'd like to have the voters weigh in on some level of residential development
Right.
From zero to some other number, and obviously, you're not going to have 4,400 advisory measures, you'd have to pick, you know, some ranges there, obviously.
Like maybe six options or something.
But the answer, I think, is yes. You could arrive at a, kind of a conceptual plan that had different land use mixes and distributions, et cetera, but if the real driving issue is the residential piece, then you could submit, you know, for example, three or four advisory measures to the community, get a, a sense about what the community feels about those, and then the matter would be returned to the council for then some sort of, then you would have some, something in front of you, and then you would have a situation where you were to approve it, and then resubmit that to the voters, or, or not, or you would just come to a conclusion about something and then submit that back to the voters or not. It really kind of depends on, you know, how, what you want to consider conceptually and how much you want to involve the voters in it.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Mayor, you know, before Clark joined me on the sustainability, I mean, on the Baylands Subcommittee, Ray and I were on the committee, and, and we helped put together the survey. But when we were putting together that survey, we realized that we probably were going to need another survey as we got further down the process. And, you know, having all those different options, I think we should also be looking at, you, maybe, maybe we, we might need another survey where you evaluated the different, you know, if that's something that the council wanted to do, you know, in regards to housing and right or other items as well.
Can I, can I comment on that, too? The only thing that I'm concerned about, and I don't know if we're getting too deep into it here, but the only thing that I'm concerned about is like the more options that you provide to people, I think the less clear it may turn out to be. So if you, like, if we want to talk about the survey, it seemed to be a 50, very close to a 50-50 split. If you were looking at no housing versus any combination, all the combinations of housing possible. So I think, like, you know, the more options you give, the more spliced potential the vote may be, that we would gone through all this effort and all this time waiting for election to roll around without having enough, really enough clarity. So, you know, in my, my thought, I think that it's beneficial for the council to maybe come up with fewer options that it's okay with seeing, so that we can get a better understanding, so that we're not having, you know, you give too many choices and you might not get a good enough sense if it's too spliced up. Because then, we're going to be back in a similar position, and I think it could make it, we would have missed a real opportunity to like have a vote help give us guidance, if that's making sense.
Yeah, no, it does.
Well, I think, I think we just need to delve into it and see where it takes us. Start having discussion and not pussyfoot around.
Yep. All right.
Well, I have a few questions, and then we also wanted to have the public, have the opportunity to ask questions before we got into our deliberations. So I have a question about, this is for, for our city attorney, the, the regional welfare doctrine that is discussed in the staff report. So it talks about this California Supreme Court case from 1976, Associated Home Builders versus City of Livermore.
And what page is that on?
It's the, the first page of the memorandum to the council from myself and Ms. Crumbide.
Attachment 4A.
4A.
Okay. So, can you talk a little about what the legal impact is of that holding on our decision-making here? Because it seems to me that it's talking about how cities have to look not just at their city, but at the entire affected area when considering housing. And so, can you expand upon that?
Sure. The, there's, there's no question that in this case, that's now, you know, forty-some years old, from the California Supreme Court, it certainly looked at a, a situation where a community, here the City of Livermore, had adopted certain restrictions with respect to housing, and the challenge there was that, that the, the city could not just look within its own borders, there had to be a look on a regional, on a regional basis to see if, if there would be impacts to prevent housing from, from moving ahead, and what impact that would have on the region. And the, the Supreme Court said that, that a community has to look at the region, you know, look at, at the matters on a regional basis, cannot just look within its own borders. But other than sort of giving that general guidance, as it were, it certainly did not lay down hard and fast rules in terms of how that's to be applied. So I think what the, what, what the staff has tried to do with respect to this, to this application, is to, is to provide the information for the council to consider, and you certainly have heard from, you know, the community and from other people who are interested in housing, in terms of, you know, what, what the council should consider with respect to the housing on a regional basis. And, you know, I'm not sure I can give any clear guidance on that, other than the fact that I think the council has to take that into consideration when it's making its deliberations. You can't just ignore it. But again, there's, there's not hard and fast rules that have come down from the, the courts in terms of what that, what those rules should be. In the San Diego case, that's also cited in there, it, it, in that particular case, where there, there was a challenge, and the, the court held what the City of, of Del Mar had done in that particular case, was, was, was appropriate, because it, it showed that the council had gone through an analysis about what, what, what impact its decision would have on the regional housing. And I think that's the kind of thing that, that, that this council would have to be involved in, and certainly, when the council makes its decision, the, the findings, et cetera, that the council will be called upon to make will reflect that.
Okay. So in the, in the first case, the Livermore case, under the facts of that case, was there any liability on the part of the city, if you recall?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't a damages kind, it was not a damages kind of case, it was simply a, a, my recollection is a declaratory relief action, asking the court to invalidate the, the restrictions or conditions that the council had imposed, because it felt that, that the council had not looked at the regional, the regional welfare doctrine, as it were, and therefore invalidated what they had done, sent it back for further proceedings.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, those are all my questions at this point.
I had one question for staff, either John or Lloyd, if you could indulge me on this. So Brisbane is not a standalone PDA, we're a part of a bi-county PDA. Can you expound on that, on what that means, who, what, where, why, and how, and when?
Well, when the PDA, and this is probably an application that's probably close to ten years old, there was a, already a PDA for the southeastern portion of San Francisco, Vis Valley and, and Executive Park, and there was a discussion about whether the Brisbane Baylands should be a PDA, or could be a PDA, and given the lack of housing and any, any, you know, regulatory authority on the part of the city to approve housing, it was determined that the more, most appropriate course was to include the Baylands as part of a bi-county PDA, and that's how the, the combination of housing and jobs and employment and housing were being met, which is kind of a PDA criteria. And the argument made was that there would be housing and employment in proximity to transit, irrespective of whether that housing was in San Mateo County, Brisbane, or in San Francisco, that the area across the county line would function as a PDA was intended to function, where there's those opportunities for transit usage and mixed use. And that was the basis why it was included as a bi-county PDA. There was never any commitment on the part of the City of Brisbane, or obligation on the part of the City of Brisbane to approve housing within the Brisbane portion of that PDA.
And, and PDA standing for priority
Priority Development Area.
And, and who are all the players in that, John?
Well, that one only had, A-BAG approved it, and then it would have been San Francisco had their application, Brisbane amended the application to, to incorporate the Baylands as part of that PDA, and the San Francisco accepted it.
Yeah, and is Daly City also a portion of that?
I don't believe it extends out to the Cow Palace site.
Okay. Thank you. And just one last thing on the agenda report, just something that kind of jumped out, you know, we throw these acronyms out, the PDAs and all that, but, one of the answers about the location of the water tank, I think you're answering that in 4B in the staff report. It says, what is required elevation of the water tank, and used to figure 260 to 270 MSL, is that mean sea level? Is that what that's, okay. And I understand it. Okay. Thank you.
So I did have one other question. So, I think this might be for perhaps the city attorney, I'm not sure if staff will be able to address this. So it's about SB 375, and the staff report talks, this is on, on page two of the attachment 4A. It talks about the city's requirements to comply with the sustainable community strategies and/or SB 375 targets. So, can you talk about what are the legal requirements on a city in complying with this, the sustainable community strategy and SB 375 targets? And what would be the legal ramifications if housing were not approved to, as a, as a means to reducing greenhouse gas emissions?
Well, as indicated in the, in the report, SB 375 does not require the local jurisdictions to approve housing.
Okay.
It does, it does require for, you know, when the council's looking at a, at a project, it does require the council to, you know, to look at the components of SB 375, the, the regional transportation planning process, the incentives, and the, and coordinating with the, what the regional housing needs allocation, needs to consider all those things and make a determination whether to approve housing or not. But as long as the council goes through that type of analysis and gives weight and effect to what 375 requires the council to do, as long as, as that is covered, and as long as the, the SEQA requirements that SB 375 imposes are met, then, then the legal requirements are satisfied. It isn't, it isn't a, a matter where if housing is not approved, that 375 is, is somehow violated.
Okay. And the staff report talks about that if, it says if the sustainable community strategy falls short on meeting the targets, that the, the region must prepare an alternative planning strategy that if implemented would meet those targets, so
That's correct.
What's the, what does that mean? And what is it by the region? Is that the city?
No, no. What, and again, part of the, maybe the disconnect in the city's comment letter on the latest version of the planned Bay Area, which assumes certain housing in the Baylands that the city hasn't approved yet. The sustainable community strategy is theoretically considered a bottoms-up strategy, when it's based on current sort of city planning and regional planning, so it's primarily based on current general plans throughout the region, right? And that's, they build to a, a strategy, and they demonstrate that based on the current general plans of all these jurisdictions, that they can meet these targets. Now, in this particular case, they've made what I consider a manual adjustment to Brisbane's general plan to demonstrate they meet the target. So I think that's part of our issue with their whole, including the Baylands as part of their housing component. If, if there's bottom-up strategy of a sustainable community strategy, say, none of the general plans in the region, if you kind of cumulatively looked at them, and they didn't allow the region to meet the, the goals and targets of SB 375, then A-BAG and MTC would be obligated to develop an alternative planning strategy, and that would be almost like a what-if, where what would it take? You know, maybe, maybe the levels are here, and for the region to achieve these targets, these are the kind of planning changes that would need to be make, made locally, that's what you'd have to demonstrate to the state, that show what that delta is, what that increment of change would be required to meet targets.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can just follow up with that. So, so John, so SB 375 was enacted to So, so John, so SB 375 was enacted to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and then the sustainable community strategy created the, basically the framework, the platform for which to, to try and fulfill these goals of SB 375, in that if projects want to receive, say, transportation funding, then the projects have to be compatible with the sustainable community strategy, is that correct?
There's a competitive, yeah, need for projects to demonstrate compliance for certain discretionary transportation funds.
So though the Baylands project doesn't have to meet the requirements of sustainable communities, the sustainable community strategy, if we want to receive funding for transportation infrastructure and things like that, then we would have to abide by the strategy.
That would be one interpretation. I think it would, it'd be an interesting question because, since we are part of a by-county PDA, I'm not sure how the regional and the political implications of how that would affect San Francisco's ability to, to chase transportation dollars for some of the work they want to do along the same corridor. It's probably a very interesting question how that would play out over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Nope. Okay. Great. Let's open it up to public comment. I don't have any slips. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Okay. Greg Anderson?
Honorable counsel, thank you very much. So I have a lot of questions about housing tonight, and I want to start off by saying, why would you build housing on the Baylands? Now, this is a rhetorical question. Certainly, there are many reasons to build housing on the Baylands. I'm sure some people here tonight will remind you of some of them. But specifically, I want to talk about process. You don't want to build housing on the Baylands if it doesn't meet the goals of the people who are asking for housing, clearly. So if we talk about sending out a vote to the people, would you really ask them to vote for a small number of housing? Is that going to make any sense? We have a problem in the area with transit now, where it's becoming kind of ironic that public transportation is becoming gentrified, because funding for transit is happening with large developments. So the transit is best to the large developments. So you have a situation developing where the upper-income people are taking public transportation happily, and the lower-income people are forced to drive long distances. So I think that if you are really going to approach this question about whether there's housing or not on the Baylands, you sort of have to make a list of the problems you're trying to solve, come up with a plan that actually solves those problems. And I would purport that it's either high-density housing or no housing, because you're not going to solve any problems if you put 100 units next to transit. That's ridiculous. You might as well not go through the risk of the cleanup and everything, going to do it small like that. The reason this gets complicated, though, is once you get into high-density housing, then you have to tackle all of the issues with high liquefaction and all of the transportation issues, and, you know, there's a plethora of problems that you have to overcome. And, you know, this is essentially why the planning commission recommendation ended up looking the way it did, because we didn't feel that the DIR solved all of these problems for high-density. So that's essentially what you've got ahead of you in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Salmon?
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I couldn't agree more with what Greg said. And I don't think we should approve any plans until the Bayland is cleaned up and the landfill is closed. And if we're really concerned about the regional welfare, I don't think 4,400 units of housing is really going to be a big contributor to regional housing needs. Not nearly as much of a contributor as a true renewable energy source and energy farm and demonstration that we can produce enough energy to be sustainable, that we, you know, have high-speed rail that dramatically cuts down on the amount of wide regional transportation needs, and what could be, affect us more at a more intrinsic level than waste management, it would affect every single person in San Francisco County. So if you want to talk about the benefits of a, of a by-county PDA, well, that would certainly benefit San Francisco. And it seems again, with the pressure for housing on the Baylands, that it's the same old story with San Francisco, where I'm watching the Salesforce Tower go up, and all of the other huge high-rises and all of the businesses in San Francisco, and they're relying on everyone else to do housing, just like they have for the last 50 years, and not build it for San Francisco. So I really think that the situation with the Baylands is much more complicated than housing or not housing, and I, I will say that I was pretty disgusted when I really started looking into all the housing advocates that came to speak. And what really broke my heart was to look at Green Belt Alliance, and to realize that over a fifth of their income comes from the San Francisco Housing Group, and it's really all funded by developers, and that the Brisbane Baylands did a big fundraiser for them in September. So basically, that was a paid endorsement by an organization that I, I used to have a lot of respect for. And then you start delving into these other housing organizations that came to speak to you, and obviously, they hadn't done their homework, not a single one of them cracked the EIR and read anything in it, and yet they stand up here and say, housing, 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 but it's all funded by developers. When you really start digging in and seeing who's paying the bills for all of these nonprofits and, and bright young faces that came and begged you for housing, housing that they're not going to be able to afford, housing that's really not going to solve the housing crisis that we're facing, really, population control is going to solve the highest housing crisis we're facing, 4,400 units on the Bayland is not. I also agree with what Madison said about slicing and dicing it, it's just going to confuse the issue. It's really a yes or no question, do we want housing or do we not want housing on the Baylands? Now, I also don't think it's fair to say no housing and then bill eight to 12 million square feet of commercial space. No, I don't think that should be built there either. I really think that land needs time to heal, and there are some really good uses that that land could really contribute regionally without housing and without huge amounts of development, until it has a chance to heal and until we really know more about how to deal with the extreme toxins that are there. This council has taken an extreme stand already in regard to human health. Your, you know, issues about no smoking and multi-unit buildings, your issues about constricting the marijuana laws, your issues about human trafficking, your issues about even tattoo parlors and everything else, all speaks to a certain level of concern for the public health. And what could be more concerning to the public health than to build housing and office buildings on what is basically unsafe land on both sides of the tracks? On the one side, you have unregulated landfill with God knows what in it, but we do know a lot of what's in there, tire dumps, and I am sure that there's radioactive, I, I could, 98% sure there's radioactive material there from the shipyards. It'd be crazy if there wasn't, because they were dumping everywhere. And on the other side, you've got all this stuff from the rail yards, from Schlegel Lock, which they really don't know what's going on with that plume, you've got the stuff from sulfur chemical, you've got the stuff from the boneyard, you know, and, and really, the EIR is so inadequate, I can't believe we could consider certifying it. I really don't think that we're there yet, and I really don't want you to rush this process either. And the other thing that I really want is for the Brisbane City Council, even though it's a different group of faces here, except for that one and a couple others, that you keep your promise to the people of Brisbane and allow them to have a vote on the decision of whether we're going to accept housing or not, because with it comes a whole lot of other burden, financial burdens that the City of Brisbane will be responsible for. So thank you for taking the time to do a very long and thorough and thoughtful process, and not be swayed by outside interests, especially outside, paid-by-developer interests screaming housing, 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 and making you try to, trying to bully you into yet again accepting a bad deal from San Francisco. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay.
You know, Madam Mayor, I know that we just sat down, but if we could just take five minutes?
Oh, sure.
All right. Thank you.
Five minutes.